The meeting will begin in thirty seconds. If you wish to speak during the. The meeting will begin in ten seconds.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Pitt County Planning Board Meeting for October. Ms. Tab. Can we get the roll call, please?
Fay Barefoot. Don Brown. Naomi Buck.
Here.
David Davenport.
Here.
Brad Guth.
Here.
RJ Hemby.
Here.
Ricky Hines.
Here.
Steve Little.
Here.
Tucker Moore.
Here.
Maria Rogerson.
Here.
And Danny Smith.
Here. Mr. Brown is out of town.
He's on vacation. And Ms. Fay also notified us that she would not be available tonight.
Alright, thank you. Next up, we will have our prayer by Steve and our pledge by David Davenport. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you for your love and your mercy that you granted to us each and every day. We thank you for each blessing of life. We pray that you've allowed us to come into this meeting tonight. Lord, we just pray that everything that is said and done might be in accordance to your will. We pray right now that Jesus might bless us in this meeting, use us, and guide us. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Turn to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for August meeting.
So, Booth.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Rose.
Just to be sure, Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion? Tab was not.
I'm sorry. RJ Hemby seconded that motion.
Thank you.
For the record. For the minute.
And Steve.
Steve Little.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleased to announce we're back to a full board tonight. We have Ms. Naomi Buck that's joined us for District A. Of course, that's north of the river. So, Ms. Buck has served before on our Board of Adjustment. We're glad to have her on this side this time with the planning board. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tab and ask Ms. Naomi to drop, come down front and hopefully get sworn in one more time.
Raise your hand, right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
Naomi G. Buck.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the planning board.
As a member of the planning board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Naomi.
So, with that, tonight being the first opportunity in the new terms of the planning board members, it is also the opportunity that we go ahead, per our rules of procedure, and elect new officers, both for the Chair and the Vice Chair. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant County Attorney, and he's going to come up and help you through the election of officers. And thank you, Mr. Hines. I know you served two terms as our Chair, so I'll go ahead and acknowledge your good service before these past couple of years. Thank you.
I enjoyed it.
We enjoyed you.
Thank you. As Jordan Smith, Assistant County Attorney, as James said, per your rules of procedure at your October meeting, you elect a Chair and Vice Chair, and I'm just here to walk you through that process tonight. The general, the ground rules are any member can nominate any other member for either office. Nomination doesn't technically require a second. And if there are multiple nominations, then we will vote on the nominations in reverse order, and the highest vote getter will win the seat. Any questions about the process? If not, we can open up the floor to nominations for Chair.
I nominate RJ Hemby.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I guess we'll vote on Mr. Hemby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Hemby.
Thank you.
It's alright with you. I'll continue on to the Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
Same, same rules apply. If there's no questions, open up the floor to nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate Brad Guth.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Brad Guth being elected Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Guth on being Vice Chair. One other item of business is the Planning Director needs to be reappointed as the Executive Secretary, so if there could be a motion, second, and a vote to reappoint James Rhodes as the Executive Secretary.
So, motion, Mr. Attorney? So, motion? Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor to nominate Mr. James Rhodes as our Secretary. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And I think we'll just take a brief recess to shuffle the chairs.
Okay.
There you go.
The meeting will resume in ten seconds.
Okay, I want to thank you for your patience. We want to stay with the board meeting at this time. At this time, we open it up for a public address to the board. Okay. Do we have any?
List of names.
The list of names. Ms. Betsy, what's that last name?
Orman.
Orman, yes, Ms. Betsy Orman. Come to the podium because we have to get your audio.
I'm Betsy Orman. I'm one of the children of Lerue McGlohorn Castello, who was one of the heirs of Charles and Maggie McGlohorn. In 2002, when the historic district was proposed, my brothers Thomas and Paul were not impressed with that suggestion. And I assured them that historic designation was only that, a designation, and it did not have any regulations, and they did not need to fear it. My brother Paul, who always managed this property and died in early December, said that he thought it was never a good idea to encumber property. Now, you were proposing to enclose that property and that property alone in in a zoning that is about two and a half times as restrictive as the rest of the property on that road. And we have always considered ourselves part of all of the property on that highway and on Pecoson Road, and we would prefer to be zoned like everybody else on that road. And it was not the original intention of the historic district designation to make it more restrictive or to control it. The historic district designation meant you could do as you wanted to with your property. You could paint your house purple, you could sell it, you could divide it, you could do what you wanted to. But now, you have changed that, and you've used that district as the outline or the boundaries of what you will change. Our family sold the Maggie Charles McGlohorn house to Sonny McGlohorn. We did not intend to be selling the right to control the rest of that farm, and we retain ownership of the rest of that farm. So, we would like you to consider what we've always been, part of that neighborhood of the 903 highway, which is a recent thing to us, that designation, and the Pecoson Road. We have always abided by the same principles, and if you ride down that area, it has the same appearance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Maggie, Ms. Maggie Castello.
My name is Maggie Castello, and I live in Northern Virginia. I am here to represent Castello Farms also. As a historic designated area, we've had a pipeline go through our farm, and also, it's been, property has been divided by the highway. To me, this now has so it's have, as a historic district, it has a loss of integrity such that I don't feel it is required to try to keep it as it was. It is not as it was. It's been wounded by a highway dividing it. The comprehensive plan as proposed for this area says that you have a right to develop east of the bypass and that this is where they expect to be housing and residential and other development to take place in west of the bypass. If I understand it right, it's to remain agricultural. So, as proposing this just, this area overlay just to cover the district seems to me out of sync with the comprehensive plan. I think I sent you all a letter, which very much, I hope you received. It very much gives my viewpoint. But to state again, my main viewpoint is that since this was designated in 2003, there has been no effort for any public good, public benefit, or common good for this. And I see it as a chance of one or two individuals to protect their private interest. Therefore, I'm against it, and I would wish it to stay as all the rest of the agricultural lands. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is it Edmond Suggs?
Edward Savage.
Savage, wow. That's either my reading or your writing.
Could be one or two.
Yes, sir. It looks like you're representing, and you have five minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I know you, you all have a very hard job, okay? And it's a very important job. And I don't think people in America now realize that taxes and laws actually start at this level. It doesn't start in Washington DC. It doesn't start in Raleigh. It starts at this level. Now, you've proposed, or the board has proposed, a 60,000 square foot. We asked at the last meeting, I asked, and you charged the board to come back with a compromise. Well, obviously, we didn't come up with a real good compromise, but they had four items on that list. I think you all should have gotten the list. One of them was to maintain 60,000 square foot in a list of permitted uses as proposed by Mr. Rhodes' staff. The second was to reduce the lot size to 40,000 square feet and maintain a list of permitted uses proposed by the planning staff. The third item was to maintain the 60,000 minimum lot size and reduce the list of permitted. And the last, number four, was to reduce the minimum lot size to 40,000 square feet. Well, we had a meeting, and like usual, we had fairly good turnout at that meeting. And they took a straw vote, and it's all here in black and white. There was eight in favor of the 60,000. There was eight in favor of reducing it to 30,000, and there was four in favor of compromising to 40. Now, looking at the straw vote, on the first 60,000, there was two of those people that voted that did not have a financial interest at all in the Rinston Historic District. They were just attending, okay? So, we haven't come up with a good compromise other than Mr. Rhodes and his staff have yet been able to give me a definitive reason why you're going to put 60,000 square foot designation in this area, and it's not a watershed, it's nothing but a historic area, and when you ride through it, there's not a sign that designates it as a historic area. If you were riding down 903, you wouldn't know when you went into Rinston and when you came out of it, okay? And that's a fact. All these are facts that I'm stating. Now, the four-lane highway as Mr. Castello has come through there, now they got drainage problems. They got water dumping all over the road. Now, the state's got to go back and do some redesign work to try to do this, or either the county's going to have to pay for it because they're dumping water on citizens in the Rinston area. And you can't, if we get a one-inch rain, you can't ride down 903 now because the water's pounding so high. So, there's a problem that's got to be fixed. That has nothing to do with this 60,000 square foot, but the 60,000 square foot, as a real estate agent noted that we didn't know was, that was attending the last meeting we had, said that it would be harmful and a monetary downfall, okay? Now, we don't have 60,000 square feet anywhere else in this county. Nobody can give me a reason why we're doing that in the Rinston District when, you know, if it's really historic, where's the signs? What designates it historic? Except for a couple of landowners want to preserve their particular farms. You know, change, green was changed. I can remember when this was the hospital, I was born in this hos, in this building, okay? My grandmother died in this building. My grandfather died in this building, okay? Things change. The old hospital used to be downtown by the river. That's where my daddy was born, okay? So, things change. We can't stop change. I'm just asking you to think about it. You're in charge of people's lives, their money, and it starts at this board, okay? And taxes start at this board. You know, at what point in time do we just go ahead and surrender all our land and rent it from you? Because right now, we're renting it from the county, pretty much. We don't own, I mean theoretically, when it gets down to a third generation on a farm, you don't own anything by the time you pay the capital gains tax. If you were to develop this property, the county's going to come out ahead because we got to come back and pay back taxes because we now changed it from rural agriculture to development party, and the county's going to be the one that comes out ahead, not the landowner. So, I'm asking tonight to either nits the Rinston part, period, or we go, or we drop down to the 40,000 square feet because that's what the rest of the county is throughout the whole county. There's no other restricted area. And this is not a watershed. This ain't over at the river.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Alright, at this time, Mr. Jeff Majet.
How y'all doing? I was going to talk about the historic district and that, you know, when we went to there, they told us that there would be no restrictions put on our properties from there, but that's already been spoken, so.
Will you mic up a little bit for me? When you raise your mic, just.
Okay, sorry about that. What, what we do want to say is, you know, the, whatever comes out of this meeting tonight is a minimum of what's required, required for a lot size. If there isn't, you know, for a long time, this area hasn't had any development. The, the last few houses that were built in it are very beautiful. They have nice barns in the back and that kind of stuff, but those houses wouldn't even be able to be allowed. I mean, the house would, but the barns and stuff to go with it wouldn't be allowed with those restrictions. If there's a subdivision built, it has to be behind a tree line and stuff, so you wouldn't see a subdivision anyway. But there's very, nobody's looking to build right now. I mean, that's, this is something for grandkids and stuff, most of these people. But that being said, if somebody is in favor of 60,000 square feet, 100,000 square feet, 10, 10, 10 acre lots, there's nothing saying that they can't put that in their deed when they, when they sell it. They can, they can make all the large requirements that they want. There's nothing saying that anybody that's got a, a piece of land can't set out a row of trees and block off anything they want. But to tell, to, to buy something, some of these people have sold their land and still have a house there, and now they want regulations to, against the people they sold the land to. So, what we're asking is to be treated like the rest of the county. And, you know, the smaller, the better, but, I mean, any, any landowner that wants to, his area to be larger, he, there's nothing holding him back from doing that. They can still put that in their deed, they can require it, and those types of things. And we would appreciate your help in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that Jessica Edwards? Boy, I'm getting better.
Names are getting easier, huh?
That one's a little easier.
And, yeah, thank you. You have five minutes.
Okay. Jessica Edwards, I live at 3738 903, and I do live right in the middle of the historical district. And I would like to say that I'm a third generation, as some of others, that lives in the historical district. And I'd like to see the historical district stay historical as it has been for, I guess, about 16 or 17 years. I've lived directly across from the Dale House, which does have a sign in front of it that says that it's the Dale House and was built in, I believe, maybe 1851. There's a sign that says the Rinston, and I'm pretty sure that it was requested by the state to not have a sign that says that it's a historical district. If I'm, I'm, yeah. I'd just like to say that it was designated as a historical district for a reason, and I'd like to see it stay like that. We already have problems with the water runoff right now with no development of the land. If it's developed further, there's going to be more issues with the water runoff. And as someone said, that you can't drive down 903 when it rains, which is very true. I've never seen so much water in my yard when it rains as I have in the past year. And any further development, as I said, is probably going to increase that. I just, I'd definitely like to, to see the historic district stay as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll have Mr. Charles Wickerson Jr. Three minutes.
I am, I am also an heir of the McGlohorn family and own land and represent my family, including my sister's estate, which was basically left in trust for her four grandchildren. We've already been hit by the highway coming through, and I think that a lot of the water problems that exist now came from that, not any other development in the Rinston community. We've been hit by the gas line coming through that has affected the ability of us to develop property. I think most of the people that have land in the Rinston community, that land is being farmed, they're perfectly happy with that. But at some point down the road, as, as we. But at some point down the road, as, as we continue to grow in Pitt County and particularly in the Winnebago Community, that land is gonna be developed. And to require sixty thousand square foot lots is a little bit way out of line to me. I think that, if I understand, Mr. Rhodes, thirty thousand square feet, is that what most of the county requires? And some of it, twenty-five thousand?
Some forty.
And there is a small portion that's forty thousand. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, uh, and in our last discussion, Mr. Rhodes said that he knew of no other place in North Carolina that had such a requirement of sixty thousand square feet. Is that correct, Mr. Rhodes? Is there anything for any other purposes?
Certainly, there are large lots.
Is that because an individual developing the land...
Could you speak into the mic? Could you speak? Excuse me, could you speak back to the mic?
It, is that because the developer put that stipulation, the landowner that was developing it? Okay. But there's no, nothing here in Pitt County that requires that. And, uh, to have a requirement that you have a hundred and seventy-five feet of front footage for a lot. When I was dealing with the Piedmont Natural Gas people, I had an engineer look at the, our property and how it was be affected and, and draw, uh, some rough sketches of what development we could do. And if you have a cul-de-sac and you have a pie-shaped lot and you got a requirement that it's got to be a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage? What, I mean, this, this is very out of question, out of line to me. If all the roads ran east and west and north and south and they were right angles, uh, I think you could do that. But this is by far, uh, regulations that are way beyond what we should be having.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other persons present that didn't sign up and would like to speak at this time?
Yes, sir, I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir, come to the mic and state your name and...
My name is Mike Skinner. I live in the Historic District, Rinston Historic District. I live about three hundred yards from the highway. And I like to thank all the folks that did the planning on the highway to bypass to make it minimal evasive to the area. They've did a good job with it. We've still got some drainage issues, but we need to work on that. That's the biggest thing. Now, like I say, I've lived in Historic District my entire life. I farm in the area also. My wife, she's been a schoolteacher in the Pitt County School System for thirty-one years. I got a son that's been teaching in the Pitt County School System for ten years. And I live in the area. A lot of these folks you're talking with do not live in the area, and I understand their concerns and what have you. But there's, the land can still be developed. But what's, the number of folks that I have come through every day looking for land, want two, three, four, five acres, it's not like they're not gonna be able to develop land. They can develop land, but let's have some restrictions. Let's have a big, nice yards, big, nice, uh, lots on that land. And, uh, that's one of the biggest things I'd be concerned about. And if you write it down, nine oh three, right now, where all the, uh, the homes are at, probably eighty percent of the homes that are on nine oh three have got sixty thousand plus square foot lots. So that's kind of the, the character of the, of the neighborhood. And, and I would like, really like to see some concern about, let's save, over the years in, in the country, the amount of farmland is being taken out, year after year. Let's, for once, let's make a change in here in Pitt County. Let's save some farmland. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, sir. Name and address and... Okay, thank you.
So it's up to you if you wanna give in.
I won't need more than three minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, my name is Charles McGlawn, and I live at thirty-five ninety-two NC Highway nine oh three South. I have lived, well, I lived in the district from nineteen forty-seven to nineteen sixty-eight, and then I lived in the district again from nineteen eighty-eight until now. So altogether, more than fifty years. It's a very special place to all of us, even those who don't live here. And all of the speakers that you heard tonight, who were arguing for lesser lot size, they have one thing in common. None of them lives in Rinston. So Rinston is a different kind of place, even though they all grew up there, except for Mr. Majet. It's different to the people who live there than it is the people who have their property there. There are fifty counties approximately in eastern North Carolina, and there's one Rural Historic District. So to say that no other land in Pitt County is subject to a restriction of sixty thousand feet is somewhat misleading because no other land, no other land in eastern North Carolina is on the National Register of Historic Places as farmland. So, you know, I would encourage you to uphold the work of your planning staff, who do an excellent job, day in and day out. We all want Pitt County to be a nice place to live. And we support all of the dimensional requirements and the use requirements. And would ask you to, um, except for the ones that I mentioned last week, which I don't have in front of me. I'll ask Mr. Rhodes, do you have those in front of you?
They have it in the package.
Okay, okay, well, it's in your package, and I just don't have the material laid out in that fashion. So there, there were five, uh, use, there were a lot of uses that are permitted of right, and there were just five, like a feed store and some more, uh, uses that would involve, you know, traffic and lights and trash. We want to keep this area nice. There's a lot of trash on the road right now, but it came from the tops of cotton trucks, but it came from irresponsible citizens. But we have tried to be responsible and keep our property nice, and we want to keep Pitt County nice. And I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it everyone? Yes, ma'am, come to, come to the mic and state your name.
My name is Maggie Castello, and I've already spoken. But I want to know how this idea came about in the first place. I can't believe the planning all of a sudden said, we need to take this historic district and put a, put a zoning, a, a, another kind, another level of zoning on top of it. So how did this idea come about to do this? Now, people say some don't live there. I lived more than fifty years there. I was born and lived in two of the historic houses. And so my heart is there, even though my body has gone on to other places. And so, you know, that is not a valid, I, I realize and I've respected the people who have stayed there. But that doesn't mean it has to remain as it always has been. Things do have to progress.
Thank you. Are there any others? Okay. I would like to, at this time, declare the public comment section closed. Moving to item number seven on the agenda, and that is Mr. Eric Roos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first action item we have for you tonight, it's a rezoning request from, by Stallings Mini Storage, Inc. Request is by Stallings Mini Storage to rezone. There's two parcels in, as part of this request. One is one point six-three acres. It's owned by Eddie Stallings Jr. and Carrie J. Stallings, parcel number five one six nine three. And three point one five acres owned by William Robertson and Donna White. That's parcel five zero three nine zero. Uh, these properties located, they're right next to each other, one's in front of the other on the southern side of Beestoke Road, east of its intersection with NC forty-three South. And the request is to go from rural residential to general commercial conditional district, and that's for the expansion of an existing self-storage warehouse business. That's Stallings Mini Storage, which, as I'll show you in a second, is located right next to the property. So this is the location itself, it's highlighted in yellow. You see it is on, uh, Beestoke Road. Stallings Mini Storage is directly adjacent to this property, so this would be an expansion of that. There's some pictures of the property itself. You see over to the left-hand side, you can see the existing, uh, storage facility. And just to note, this did, used to be a mobile home park. It was Pecan Ridge Mobile Home Park. This is looking up Beestoke Road, hang back towards Stallings. It's in the curve, and so Stallings is there. Uh, the entrance is in the curve of Beestoke Road. And this is looking back towards the west, is that you're heading back towards NC forty-three South. Uh, this is an existing road, and as I'll show you in the site plan in just a second, that road's gonna be incorporated into the plan itself for the, the mini storage. And then, of course, the existing, uh, Stallings Mini Storage and some existing residences that are located adjacent to and across from the property. Then there is a small mobile home park that's also located, uh, just to the west of it. Land Use Plan calls for it to be suburban residential. That designation is intended to include residential land uses and single-family manufactured home subdivisions, manufactured home parks, uh, limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial, and public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. Uh, that criteria does include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, a location at a major intersection, or proximity to similar uses and separation from other uses like residential uses that are non-compatible with it. Uh, that designation is distinguished by a greater potential for development. You see the existing land uses, it's predominantly residential, uh, but there are several commercial uses around it. Again, the existing mini storage is a couple contractor businesses. Uh, and then on NC forty-three South, there's also some commercial land uses as well. In the zoning map, you see there's also some existing general commercial, particularly, uh, adjacent to it and also in, in close proximity along NC forty-three South. Uh, the general commercial district is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate density multifamily uses, uh, in those areas that have access to major thoroughfares and utilities to support that type of development. The Conditional Zoning District allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions. And again, that proposed use tonight is a self-storage warehouse or expansion to the existing one. This is a site plan that was submitted by the applicant. Uh, just to point out a few things, uh, the site itself, again, it is two separate parcels, but it's all included under one development proposal. So this, the red dash line encompasses both those parcels. Uh, they will be, uh, providing asphalt parking. Uh, the parking is, were spread out across the site, uh, adjacent to the units. And then you see the existing Pecan Ridge r- drive that's gonna be incorporated into that parking area. There's, uh, several unit, several mini storage units being proposed, approximately sixty-one thousand, uh, square feet worth of storage space. Due to the amount of impervious area that's being proposed, they will be required to provide a stormwater pond, and they're showing that, they're on, to the south of the, of the units. There's also a forty-foot drainage easement that's to the, to the west of the property, as well as a fifty-foot repairing buffer. And they're gonna be maintaining existing vegetation to the south, which also is sort of encompasses that repairing buffer area. Uh, we find that the request is consistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan. It meets the locational criteria for the suburban residential designation, given, uh, it's close proximity to NC forty-three South, as well as other general commercial zone land uses. Uh, we also find that the request is reasonable and in the public interest, given that it's an expansion to an existing business. Uh, it's located adjacent to these properties, and it's also within one-quarter mile of the major state highway, NC forty-three South. So staff does recommend approval of the request. At that time, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to open up for public comments.
Are there any questions on the board, board to Eric at this time? Okay. Public comment section. Public comments. Do we have any signed up for that?
There's a sheet to see if he wants to speak.
Okay. B-R-Y-E-N-D. How you, how you pronounce that?
I just wanted to see if you were gonna give it a shot.
You're right, because that's again, back to my writing or your reading?
It's my writing. Mr. Chairman, I'm Brian Fagundis. I'm with Art.
No, I've never got that.
Yeah. That's why I was interested to see where you were gonna go with it.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm with, with Art Consulting Group, with civil engineers that have put that plan together that was included in your package. I'm here tonight on behalf of Stallings Mini Storage. Uh, Mr. Gooby did a great job with his presentation. I don't have a lot to add to it, unless you guys have questions that we can try to help answer for you. Uh, again, it's in compliance with the land use plan. It's the expansion of an existing facility. Uh, the storage industry nationwide is a very hot commodity. Evidently, we all have a lot of stuff, and we'd like to put it somewhere. Uh, this business has been located there on Beestoke Road. It started in nineteen ninety-nine, so it's been there for twenty years. And this is an expansion contiguous to that existing buil- business that continues to operate today. So, again, if you guys have specific questions, be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions on the board at this time? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others would like to speak on this? I guess we'll close the public comment section. At this time, Eric? What's your pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we accept.
Second motion.
Their approval.
It's been motion of Mr. Heinze and Mr. Little and Second. At this time, we would ask that all in favor to say a motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed would have that same right. Hearing none, motion carried.
Thank you. And I just want to note, too, this will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on November eighteenth, I think it is. It's, yeah, November eighteenth at a public hearing, so we'll send notices out to all the adjacent property owners for that as well.
Thank you. Eric, I guess you remain. Zoning ordinance and amendments.
Yes, sir. Uh, we're bringing back the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, uh, tonight. As most of the folks that spoke at the public comments, uh, before this, this is, uh, in relation to those. These amendments were initiated by staff. Uh, you have them in your packet. They were recommended, again, for the purpose of implementing the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, uh, that, which was adopted in October, just, just about a year ago, uh, tonight. So, uh, these amendments are proposed to become effective on January first. And they have been presented for approval according to the following schedule. We, you know, we originally presented the draft amendments to this board back in July. Uh, Planning Board held a public hearing on August twenty-first. Uh, at that meeting, we were asked to hold a stakeholder meeting with the folks from Rinston to get some more input and to try to come to some sort of consensus. And we'll, I'll talk about that in just a second. But we were, we, we have that meeting on September thirtieth. Tonight, we'll be presenting the final draft amendments again to this board for a, uh, recommendation. And then November eighteenth, we'll be looking to take it to the Board of County Commissioners for a public hearing that night as well. And just to, uh, remind the board, at that August public hearing, uh, we did have several other amendments that were presented as well. Those were heard by the county commissioners and were approved, all except for one, which was the, uh, conditional and special use permit consolidation. They decided not to act on that or turn that part down. Uh, but all the other ones, uh, they did act on and approve. So some of those became effective immediately, and I think one other one, uh, also becomes effective on January first. So if these are approved by the board, they'll come online same time as that, that one amendment as well. So these amendments, again, there's been a lot of talk about Rinston. Rinston is just a part of this. We do have other, uh, proposed recommendations or proposed amendments for the Southwest Bypass Plan. There's four in your packet tonight. Uh, the first is cluster development regulations. And this is an option, it's a voluntary option. Again, this would not just be specific to the Southwest Bypass or to, uh, the Rinston District. This would be county-wide. This is, this would be a county regulation or a county option for development. And this would allow developers to utilize smaller lot sizes and higher density development. Would allow for at least anywhere from a ten to a thirty percent lot reduction based upon the amount of open space required. And in order to do that, there are some stipulations on the amount of land that has to be, uh, set aside, not only for the open space, but the size of the tract that's to be subdivided. This option would encourage design that minimizes land disturbance, and it would group building lots for greater protection of resources. And encourages open space, reduces stormwater runoff, and would preserve agricultural character. So we've shown this diagram to this board before, but this is just a, um, description, just show that, you see how the lot sizes will be grouped together in certain areas. Larger lots would be sort of pushed to the, the edges of the tree lines, and so you would still be able to maintain, uh, open space in natural resource areas. and so you would still be able to maintain open space in natural resource areas. The second is, again, also the creation of the Rinston Rural Historic District overlay. And that overlay was to establish to protect the historic properties, views, and agricultural nature of the Rinston area. It does include increased residential and non-residential development standards. And that's in order to maintain that rural characteristic of the area. And non-residential land uses are allowed on a limited basis. There's just a few. This district will have its own specific set of land uses. And those uses, those non-residential uses, will be permitted on a case-by-case basis as a special use that will be issued by the Board of Adjustment. So this just illustrates what would encompass that overlay. It includes all those properties that are within the Rinston Rural Historic District along mainly along NC nine oh three, pretty much between Frog Level Road down to Calley Stokes Road. The third item is the creation of the Southwest Bypass Highway Quarter Overlay. And that's to establish to provide enhanced landscaping, viewshed protection, and development standards specifically along the bypass itself. And these, most of these standards are identical to our existing Highway Quarter Overlay requirements. We already have overlays on US two sixty-four east and west and NC eleven north. So for the most part, for all intents and purposes, they are basically the same. And again, these would apply, these standards would apply to new development. We wouldn't be making existing landowners go in and establish buffers or anything like that. That would be for when properties developed for new, new non-residential purposes. So it would require a landscape buffer yard adjacent to the bypass, as well as where non-residential development abuts residential use, and would also have additional design and appearance standards for non-residential development. So this is the corridor itself. This is the right-of-way that's illustrated. The overlay would extend a thousand feet generally on either side of the corridor. And then the fourth item is the enhanced non-residential lighting standards. And that's really just to make sure that as properties develop for non-residential purposes, that any kind of lighting they're providing doesn't shine on adjacent properties, doesn't cause any sort of glare, so that they maintain those dark skies and that rural character out there. So as I mentioned, the board, following the August twenty-first meeting, did direct us as staff to hold another stakeholders' meeting with the folks from Rinston. We met with them on September thirtieth. We had about twenty stakeholders that attended. And the purpose of that meeting was to discuss that minimum lot size of sixty thousand square feet, as well as the list of permitted uses. And as was mentioned in the comments, we were not able to reach a consensus among the group on these items. We did take some sort of informal straw polls. And during that discussion, we talked about three minimum lot sizes. The staff proposal of sixty thousand, as well as forty thousand and thirty thousand square feet. Eight attendees that were there favored the proposed sixty thousand square feet. Eight favored reducing the lot size to thirty, and four favored reducing it to forty. We also talked about the list of permitted uses. And as Mr. McLaughlin noted, he had several uses that he proposed to have removed from the list. They were convenience store, farm supplies and equipment, florist, food store, garden center or retail nursery, and hardware store. And in that other informal poll, eight of the attendees favored removing the uses. Eight were in favor of not making any changes to the list. And we had a couple that didn't vote for either option. And I think a couple had left the meeting at that point, too. So that's why that total number is a little bit lower. So we do have four options that we would recommend the board consider. First option is what our staff recommendation is. That would be to maintain both the minimum sixty thousand square feet and the list of permitted uses that has been proposed by staff. The second item, or second option, would be to reduce the minimum lot size to forty thousand square feet, as well as to maintain the list of permitted uses proposed by staff. Third option would be to maintain the sixty thousand square feet and reduce the list of uses. And the fourth option would be to both reduce the minimum lot size and reduce the list of permitted uses. Now with the, if the board chooses to reduce the minimum lot size to forty thousand square feet, the other dimensional standards that we had proposed would not necessarily work that well with the forty thousand. So our recommendation would be that if the board chooses to go that route, that we would just maintain the current dimensional standards that are in the ordinance. So it'd be a hundred-foot lot width with a thirty or forty-foot setback, depending on whether it's a private subdivision road or a state-maintained road, and a ten-foot side and rear setback. So our staff recommendation tonight is part of, of course, as with any rezoning or text amendment, we have to have a consistency statement. So staff recommends that the amendments are consistent with the goals and objectives of the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan. They're recommended to implement the policy recommendations specific to land use, preservation of agriculture in open space, as well as aesthetics and design. And we recommend that the amendments are reasonable and in the public interest because they're intended to enhance design standards for development, to preserve open space and agricultural land, and to maintain the rural character of the area along the Southwest Bypass. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments with an effective date of January first, two thousand twenty. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Right. Yes, you would. Okay. At this time, we would ask that the board would ask Eric, how many questions do you like at this time? Because we got plenty.
Eric, can you elaborate on the cluster development regulations in terms of how many lots per acre that could possibly be compared to the open space that it'd require?
The main thing is that we tried to make it so that the density did not increase much beyond what is already allowed out there. So for instance, I don't have it off the top of my head, but the maximum reduction will be thirty percent in a lot size. And so on a thirty thousand square foot lot, that would be twenty-one thousand square feet for a minimum lot size. So it would be, and that, again, that would be a significant more amount of open space left out there. So even at twenty-one thousand square feet, you're still talking probably two units per acre.
Because I'm thinking of it as an alternative to the sixty thousand versus the forty thousand in terms of what we're getting ready to talk about in terms of the lot sizes. If that's an alternative to make that as a requirement rather than voluntary, is that another happy medium that meets the spirit of maintaining the character of the Rinston Historic District, but also gives the property owners ability to build at a higher density?
And we've got, we've already got some language in the Rinston regulations that they could do a little bit larger reduction in lot size, that they could reduce it up to thirty thousand square feet if they use the clustering option. And major subdivisions in Rinston are already gonna be required to have a ten percent open space provided. So the clustering, you'd get another, you'd get an additional five percent minimum of open space for a chance to reduce the lot size.
So when, I just had a quick question. So when we go to vote, what option are we actually voting on? All four of these? Do we have to take a vote on each one?
No.
Make a motion?
Make, I would recommend making the motion on the one that you prefer, and then the board could act on that.
Can I get you to back up a few screens? And let's look at what it talks about, the reducing the list of permitted uses. Are we saying it was proposed to remove the following retail uses? So if we vote for option four, for instance, they will disappear, right?
Right. That would remove those uses itself. Those are the uses that we're referring to when we talk about reducing the permitted use list. So it would remove that, and it would reduce the lot size for lot four.
So in the meeting that we had with the stake owners, was, this was their idea, right?
This was Mr. McLaughlin's proposal at the stakeholders' meeting, yes, sir.
What would be permitted if you reduced from this list?
It's, it's, there's several uses in there. Those are the ones that Mr. McLaughlin noted that he objected to. It's still a very limited use, limited list of uses. And again, most of those would be on a case-by-case basis. And so it wouldn't, they wouldn't just be permitted. They'd still have to make application to us. It would go before the Board of Adjustment. They'd have a hearing. And so it would not be, it wouldn't be just, they could do whatever they wanted out there. So there's still a process for approval of those uses.
There's still criteria that's gotta be met.
Yes.
That's right, okay.
That's right.
We understood, okay.
Right. Because as part of, as part of the Rinston District also, we've proposed there's more restrictive design criteria for non-residential uses as well.
Can I ask you this? When Rinston was created, is there any of the stakeholders who, in the beginning, you know, objected to being in it? Was anyone forced into this district at the creation of it?
That I don't know. We weren't a part of the creation of that district, so I couldn't speak to that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
No, ma'am, we can't, can't. Please don't make comments in the audience at this time for the board.
Yes, sir.
On both of these issues, it appears that the stakeholders were split right down the middle.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that the people who want the sixty thousand lot also do not want the restrictions. And the people, or the people that want the thirty thousand lot do not want restrictions. The same set, pretty much. And then the people who want the large lot, they don't want restrictions. Is that right? That you, the smaller lot size, they don't care about the restrictions? Or do those people vote consistently on both sets?
The main issues we've heard about and what we discussed at the stakeholders' meeting was the lot size and the list of uses. So we didn't get into a major discussion about the other restrictions and other regulations. Those were the two that we heard.
But my question is, they're split down the middle.
Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming they were consistent in what they wanted and what they didn't want.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. I got another question.
Yes, sir.
Eric, so just so I'm clear, on the, if we remove these retail uses, so later on, there's no chance for anyone applying and for that to go to the Board of Adjustments? That removes them permanently.
If they would be removed from the use table, they would have to come back and apply for a text amendment, just like the process we're going through now. They'd have to apply to it for a text amendment, and it would come back before this board for your consideration again as well.
Okay. Are there still further questions? I see it on the faces of the people.
These permitted uses now were in their original recommendation from the planning staff, right?
Yes, sir. Our recommendation, the information in your packet, as far as the amendments, that has not changed from the last time. Our staff recommendation has not changed.
So could we possibly hear a motion of this board of the forty, maybe? And with asking about the permitted uses, that they go before, I guess, the Board of Adjustment for uses as a special use permit in these uses, as opposed to taking them out altogether? Could a motion look like?
Could I ask one question before we make that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the, what's the minimum lot size without the restrictions being requested by the Historic District?
Talking about whether the current, the current zoning regulations? The current, it's currently all but two lots, two small lots in the Rinston District or Zone RR. So that means there's a twenty-five thousand square foot minimum lot size.
So we're going from twenty-five thousand to at least, based on these proposals, a minimum of forty thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
I move that we vote, or vote on the option of reducing the minimum lot size to forty thousand square feet and maintain the list of permitted uses as proposed by the planning staff.
I second. Okay, good, thank you. Okay, there's a motion, and there's been a second.
So that would be option, just so I'm clear, that would be option two.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So you heard the motion, and you heard, okay, are you ready to question? Okay. All in favor to say a motion at this time, want a show of hands?
We need to second.
He seconded.
David, David, I'm pulling.
Right. Show of hands for that motion, that's in favor? All opposed in that same motion? What was the count?
It was four to five. Five against.
Five against.
Five against the motion? Okay. All right. That motion died.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a forty thousand square foot lot size and reduce to permitted retail businesses.
No, his was to maintain the list.
Okay, maintain the list, okay. So you want to?
Reduce the lot size.
To forty.
And also increase the restrictions on retail.
Okay.
That would give the people that want to maintain the character of the area more leverage there, and it would give the people that want more leadway in developing their property more leadway there. It would give something to both sides of the argument.
Right. Okay, that's a motion. Do I get a second? It looked like motion dies for a lack of a second. Okay, we go around, third round.
Would just help me understand then, because all I want to say, Danny, I think we were saying almost the same thing, I think.
You wanted to keep the retail options as they are originally, correct?
Yes, the way planning staff had to start.
I suggest we.
Take them away.
Take them away.
Okay, I didn't understand.
If we're gonna decrease the lot size, I think we need to do something else to keep the character of the area.
Mr. Smith, you're asking for option four.
Correct.
That was your motion.
I would second that one.
Okay. We got a motion. Do we need to restate the motion?
Tucker seconded.
Okay. So we don't need to restate the motion, all in favor?
So may I, just to be sure what we're saying then?
Yes, sir.
If this, when this, if this motion passes, we're saying that as far as the list of permitted uses going forward, that if by chance somebody wanted to come along and put a florist in that location, they gotta come back and we got to reword our?
They would, they would have to request a text amendment to have it added to the list of uses. So it would just be same processes we're going through tonight. They would come before this board, board would make a recommendation, and then the Board of County Commissioners would vote to add it into the table.
While you're still debating, I'll just mention too, exactly what Mr. Smith has said, and this is why we gave you a lot of options tonight. This is a form of compromise with reducing the lot size, and at the same time, from the other side, the other party, reducing the number of uses. So if you were looking for a compromise, Mr. Chairman, I think you were one of those that mentioned that last time. If there's some way, that's why we gave you these various options. There were two factions here when we met in this room with the stakeholders. I believe the number four option here, as stated by Mr. Smith, works towards a compromise. Is it perfect? No.
Right. All right. Okay, I still have a motion on the floor at this time. If we can vote that, or are there an amendment to the motion? Can I carry this motion? At this time, all in favor to say a motion, say aye. Raise your hands, raise your hand, I want to see them vote. One, two, three, four. Okay, all of them, all opposed in this motion, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Boom. Okay, motion dies again. Okay, round four. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion. What would be your pleasure, board?
Can I just ask one more question, Eric?
Yes, sir.
It's to Mr. Little's question earlier. If a, say, someone wanted to put a florist there, and it went for a text amendment to the County Commissioners, would it only be just for that one instance? Or if they added florist in, that would be good for then on for?
That would be, that would be a permanent part of the Rinston District or the Rinston Overlay list of uses. Now, somebody could come back later and ask to have it taken back out. But, so, you know, our ordinance is fluid. So it's, it's permanent as long as it's in the ordinance, as long as it's been approved.
Oh, I have a question then, on that, on that note. What about the number of proposed uses in the area then? Let's say if we would limit how many could be in the area. Would that be, let's say, allowing so many? Would that satisfy folks with the usage? Since there's a problem with the per usage, let's say we put a restriction on the number of that can be in the area, no more than? Would that be a compromise?
We might have to refer to our attorney on that matter.
So, you know, I think the answer to the question is, um, uses have to be, um, in, in the, in the zoning ordinance specifically known, whether they are allowed by right, allowed by permit, or, or totally prohibited. It couldn't be capped on just a general number. The uses themselves have to be identified under one of those types of categories. A use by right, a use by permit, or prohibited. And there may be some other examples, but generally, so you have to, each use has to be identified under some type of category.
Right. Well, my, my, my conversation with that would be, uh, with by permit. I think that would be by permit, those uses.
If I could just make sure I'm clear on what you're requesting. You mean, so if, if florist, for example, was a permitted use, are you saying you wanna put a limit on the number of florists that could be out there? Or, okay.
Any, any of that, not just necessarily the florists, but, and let's say, for instance, like, if someone wanted a nightclub, and I know not, but I'm just saying for an example. Oh, yeah, okay, I got some motion on that, look at them, what they move around now? Okay, good deal, we gonna have fun on this board, I can tell already. Okay. Some, all right. So that's what it is, we, we're asking that we permit these uses, but by permit. In other words, they had to come back before the board and, and do whatever paperwork they need to do before it's allowed. Not just go in and just set it up and go for it. They have to come back to this board, present it, if it's not, um, within what this board wants, then they would deny it. What you think about that motion?
Does that work, Eric?
That's gonna be them on the list.
Does that work?
I, I, no, I, I don't think we could enforce that.
Well, he said by permit.
Well, that, that means it, each use has to be listed as to whether it can be permitted, but I don't think we can put a limit on a sp, number of specific uses within an area.
Mm-hmm, well, I'm, I took that part out about the permitted uses. I was just saying now, uh, could we do it by permit, as opposed to just being on the list? On the list with by permit?
I'm not, I'm kinda, cuz basically, as a special use, they would have to get a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment to operate.
Right, that's what I'm asking for.
That's what we have in there already. Every time you see that S means that's a special use permit, won't come before this board, but there's a special review by the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
So, um, I'm all confused and hungry. So if we said no overlay, that's basically going back to the number four option, right?
If you, if you stated that, that you did not want to do the Rinston overlay, period. No, that would be separate from what we've recommended.
Okay.
It, it would basically, there would just be no restrictions in there, other than what is already allowed in the zoning ordinance. It would maintain the status quo.
That's what motion I will make.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we re, oh, good, good, thank you. Uh, can we?
That it be status quo like it is?
That you, no Rinston overlay district at all?
No overlay district at all.
Right.
No, no lot changes or anything.
Okay, that's the motion, do I have a second on this hand?
Yes.
Okay. It's been motion by Mr. Hines and second by Mr. Tucker. Okay, all in favor of that motion, will you raise your hand? One, two, three, four. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, okay? All opposed in that same motion, raise your hand. One, two, one, two, three, four. Okay, motion carry. Five, four.
Okay. So, mo, so then, if I could get a motion on the remaining three items, cuz again, Rinston is just a portion of this. So the recommendation will go forward that there'll be no Rinston overlay district. Uh, but again, we have three other items. We have the Southwest Bypass Overlay, the Cluster Development, and the Enhanced Lighting Standards as well. And again, staff recommends approval on those, those items.
I'll make a motion that we go with staff recommendations.
Second? I second that motion.
I want all three, all at one time?
All three.
Go ahead and lump them in all three.
Can we lump them all three? Oh, do you need?
Yes, yes.
The end, second. Okay, you've heard the, uh, motion, and you've heard the second. All in favor to say a motion, will you say aye?
Aye.
And, and opposed to have that same right? Motion carry. Thank you.
Thank you. Then again, we'll, we'll carry these recommendations from the board to the, um, to the Board of County Commissioners also here on November eighteenth.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, moving right along, the subdivision ordinance amendment, um, Jonas.
Wow.
Jonas.
Yes.
I got that right, cuz, uh, a different writer.
Um, good evening.
Good evening.
If you will remember back at your August, uh, Planning Board meeting, we brought a list of subdivision amendments, uh, before you. Um, those included...
Excuse me, could you hold one second? Let, let them clear out.
Sure.
Tom, nice of you to stay, brothers.
He has no choice, we got him hired. Okay, now I guess we can proceed, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, if you remember back at your August Planning Board meeting, we brought a list of, uh, subdivision amendments, uh, before you. Those included the roadside buffers, the cluster mailbox provisions, as well as, uh, open space requirements. Those, uh, amendments went before the Board of Commissioners at the September meeting, and they, uh, essentially passed those amendments to the ordinance. Um, so those will be, become ineffective on January the first, twenty twenty. Tonight, at that same August, uh, Planning Board meeting, uh, we also included the provision for, uh, sidewalks and curb and gutter. At that meeting, you, as a planning board, asked us to go back and research, uh, options and what other communities require, associated with the sidewalk and curb and gutter. So I'm here tonight to present, uh, some of those findings and amendments. Little schedule, we're, uh, here tonight, um, presenting the draft amendments to you. Um, the proposed agenda will move forward, uh, to the, uh, Planning Board Public Hearing to be held in November, and essentially going to the County Commissioners at the December meeting for approval. The proposed amendments associated with the general street standards, um, are to install curb and gutter along with side, sidewalks on one side of the street, um, when the minimum, or, or the average building lot size is less than one acre, and one of the fol, and any one of the following, uh, conditions are met. Those being that if the proposed subdivision will connect with an existing subdivision that already has the sidewalks, uh, present, or if the proposed subdivision is located within one mile of an existing ETJ or mu, municipal limit. Or if the proposed subdivision is served by sewer. And the fourth one would be if the proposed subdivision is zone suburban residential. Staff feels that sidewalks do provide some, um, access to pedestrians throughout neighborhoods in Pitt County, and that it essentially, um, makes it easier for homeowners to, um, maintain, uh, their yard instead of a ditch. They have a sidewalk with curb and gutter installed, and it hopefully will reduce down on some of the drainage complaints we receive for roadside ditches. If you look at your monitors, we've, uh, developed a map that shows in green that one mile buffer, just to give you an overview of the county and, and seeing how much of the county will be impacted should this go into, uh, place. As far as the mile, uh, if it's located within one mile of the municipal limits or ETJ. So that shows any subdivision proposed in that green area that has an average lot size of less than one acre would be required, um, to install curb and gutter, as well as sidewalks on one side of the street. Moving on, also, another amendment that we're proposing tonight to you is to, um, basically come into compliance with general statutes that were passed, um, amending the performance guarantee. The county already has this provision in our ordinance. It allows currently that, uh, the improvements will be made by the subdivider within two years or twenty-four months. However, the general statutes have changed and now reduce it down from two months, or two years to one year, unless the developer determines that the scope of work will take longer than that year. So again, this amendment is included in tonight's, uh, package, but it is a result of general statutes changing, and we're just getting our ordinance, uh, in line with the general statutes. So tonight, um, the action is to discuss and advise staff, um, how the board would like to proceed regarding the proposed amendments to the curb and gutter, as well as the, uh, performance guarantees.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Um, I've got two. Uh, what was driving the one mile outside the ETJ, when the ETJ is supposed to cover planning stuff that's not?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing.
I'm sorry. Uh, what's, what was the driving force for the one mile outside the ETJ or the municipal limits?
Well, if you'll remember, originally, we came to you, um, basically going countywide, and we heard from the development community that, you know, areas of the county may want to remain rural. So we, we scaled it back and, and came up with the one mile, um, buffer, just as a general, uh, range.
Okay. Um, and what brought in the suburban residential? What's different in that?
Suburban residential, um, is a zoning district that we have. We only have one small area, if you'll remember back to the Luke's Landing, uh, subdivision. That is our only suburban residential that we have in the county, but those allow for twelve thousand five hundred square foot lots, um, to be created, and also sewer is typically provided in that, um, district because of the, the small lot sizes.
So are you pulling in the suburban residential be, because of the lot size? Because the sewer would have already ca, covered it?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And typically, it's gonna be within the one mile limit as well, so it's probably hitting on a couple of different, um, options that would tip it in already.
Okay. Are there any other questions of, of staff at this time? Okay. So what is the pleasure of the board at this time?
I guess you're asking a motion to add this amendment to the, to the verbiage of the subdivision ordinance, right?
To basically follow the ord, uh, the, uh, schedule for adopting these ordinances. Set a public hearing date for your next meeting in November, um, on November twentieth, and hear public comment.
That we accept. Staff recommendation.
I second.
Okay, it's been motion by Mr. Hines and second by Mr. The motion is second, okay, are you, are you all in, ready for the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor to say a motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed to have that same right? Hear and none, motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we got one.
I had a nay, just me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I, I was looking one way, like, out the door, go ahead.
I was the one nay.
You one, oh, I'm sorry, one nay, ma'am, ma'am, second.
She want, you do, you wanna just raise a hand? She got, okay.
You got it? Okay, good.
One nay.
Yeah, one nay, should be two nays, but anyway, thank you.
And again, we'll bring that draft language back next month, and, um, Ms. Rogerson, if you've got any suggestions or other things that you'd like for us to research before we bring it back, we'll have the public hearing. I'm sure you'll have some additional comments from, uh, the development community. So again, that is just the comment period.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Okay, at this time, Mr. Rose?
Yes, sir. Um, real quickly, um, we've got a number of informational items. Just wanted to ensure, number one, uh, Eric had re, received information that the Steiner rezoning, you may recall, that was around the Stokes Community, heavy industrial or heavy commercial, uh, request. That was tabled, asked them to bring it back in a certain way. They've decided to withdraw it completely, and as of our last visit out there, all the machinery have been moved, so they're in compliance. In other words, you will not see that rezoning coming back before you at this point.
So taping was good?
Um, maybe.
Maybe.
Baldwin Design, um, this was, uh, the rezoning request on NC thirty-three West. You may recall, it started rather large, about twenty-eight acres, reduced it to five acres. That was recommended for approval by you, and also was approved by the Commissioners at last month's meeting. Uh, we've been dealing a lot with some issues of non-compliance, and one that we had found was a sand mine that, uh, didn't have the proper buffers and setbacks. Staff been working real hard on this one, finally, now with action by the board, the Commissioners last month also have that mine, the Singleton Mine that's on Clark's Neck Road, no, Grimesland Bridge Road, is now in compliance. Uh, just also, forty-three South improvements, I'm gonna put a preface on this, just so you know, we'll be interviewing contractors or consultants over the next couple of days for our NC forty-three South Corridor Plan. With that, there's a lot of development in that area, you've heard previously. There's also plans to five lane the segment all the way from Bell's Fork, out past Conley High School's intersection. That being Worthington Road. So, the improvements for DOT were, uh, actually shared with our board on Monday night. The board agreed with a particular design that the, the DOT brought before them. So that will be put in place. Construction on this should start in the next three to four years, if all goes well. Uh, local project update, I will tell you, um, that being from North Carolina Department of Transportation, that did not happen, but at the current time, there's a shortage of funds, so a lot of our projects are being delayed, anywhere from two to three years. Appointment of map review officers, um, that is something that's required anytime we have maps. Surveys come through our office before they go to the register of deeds. We have to have map reviewers to sign off, and those have been changed. Several other items, certainly our monthly reports are in there, and other articles that were pertinent to some of your developments. So with that, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions, that's how, all we have for tonight. Of course, a lot of disinformation is on our website. We encourage, um, public to go on our website, ordinances, regulations, and, um, contact information's also available there.
I do have one question. What is the pipeline that's going throughout the county? What is that?
The pipeline is a national, it's a natural gas pipeline. We've only had one meeting pertaining to that. We could not even get a map from the group that's actually, uh, putting it in, but they're actively throughout the county installing that pipeline now. So that's about as much as we know.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Rose, I wanted to publicly thank you for coming out, um, last month to our, our monthly meeting.
Sure.
And you had, um, several takers who called me for your number, so you will be getting some calls about the sensors, and that was good presentation.
I've already been on Dr. Glenn Johnson's radio talk show.
All right, you on the move.
That's all.
Okay, um, there's an item called twenty. Item twenty, at this time, I would entertain, look at them, they're looking too. Yeah, item twenty, at this time, we would, uh, take that up at this time.
So moves.
And second, that is an adjournment, thank you.
Yes, it is.
Enjoy your...